I'm going to bring this meeting to order. Rock Hall.
McKnight.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Roja.
Here.
Vogel.
Here.
Tinder.
Here.
Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does anybody else want to sign up to speak at all? Amanda Roberts. Amanda. You could probably just stand in, what do you think, in front of your seat, that way you don't have to go around.
Okay. Hi. I rent an apartment from Christopher Gallagher who I paid over three grand for him to fix damage that I created, but it's been paid for. He has yet to do any work to fix it. And now there is black mold growing in the downstairs apartment and in my apartment. And I have kids that it's already getting me sick and it's, we can't even have them over at our house. We have to take them to the parks and if it's raining, we have to cancel visits because we don't want them to get sick. And that alone, for years, my steps leading up to my apartment needed to be fixed for five years straight. Oh, we'll get to it when I have time. This summer, I promise. Okay. This summer was the last straw because he went to Disneyland like three different times on the money I've been paying him on rent. And this is what he, he does. Not all landlords do this, I know, but this is what my current landlord is doing and I'm stuck. I can't even apply for public housing because my kids' biological mother won't let us have copies of divorce certificates for the kids so we can get into a better home for the kids. And we're stuck. Can't afford a bigger place because without going into an even worse condition because I've looked. And my house where I live at, it should be condemned. I, the only reason why we think he's able to keep it going is he has friends in the fire department and in the code enforcers office. So we, we, we don't know if he's having his buddies doing favors or not. But it sucks when he comes in to get, if I'm one day late on rent, I get bitched at and yelled at. And I pay my rent on time even though I struggle. And I'm hoping now that I just got my rate, just got a raise, that I can get out and get into a better environment for my kids.
Thank you, Amanda. Michael Berry.
I'm seventy-two, my wife is sixty-seven. We both get social security and I get a small pension. But yeah, we're pretty much exhausted financially. If it wasn't for food stamps, I don't know where we'd be. Hillcrest does a fine job inspecting their properties and taking care of them, and it's free. I don't think we need to hold back.
Nancy Walker.
Hi. I'm Nancy Walker and I've lived on Hillcrest for many, many years. I've raised three children there, two grandchildren and two great-grandchildren. And it's very family-oriented and I'm opposed, I'm a widow and I'm opposed to this new outfit coming in.
Wamu.
Thank you, ma'am. If I can't just stand here, I'm here as a manager of Hillcrest. I have ninety-four of our tenants who signed this petition. We being tenants who rent from Meadville Housing Corporation at Hillcrest at their 205-unit complex called Hillcrest strongly object to the implementation of a rental unit registration and licensing program in this city at a cost in the range of forty dollars. I also have forty-five other petitions that have been signed from non-Hillcrest residents. And as I've said here previously at previous meetings, our opposition is several issues. The first being that inflation is extremely high. It's the highest it's been in forty years. Our tenants are struggling to put food on the table, to put gas in their cars and to pay their rent. So even though you've indicated it's a minimal amount, I think any amount with this program is going to hurt the tenants of Hillcrest. Inflation is at all-time high. There's no sighted end for inflation and I'm concerned on behalf of our tenants for the cost of this program. We already have an inspection program. Every unit is inspected every year. We listen to what our tenants have as issues and we respond to them in fixer units. This is an invasion of their privacy. I can't tell you how many units and how many tenants have said, "I don't want a stranger into my unit." We're their landlords, they know us. But you've already said that this inspection program would be run by an outside company and my tenants are very concerned about who's coming into their unit and the carrying of diseases that might come with it. My final point is that we think all homes should be inspected, just not rental units. Because there is incidences in cases in the city of Meadville where a single-family resident doesn't mow their yard, doesn't do, doesn't keep their property, and they should be inspected if you're doing the inspection program just like rental units. But as I said, we currently have an inspection program. But my tenants are two main concerns, let me reiterate those, the cost of inflation that is so high right now. They're struggling to put food on the table. And the second one is the invasion of privacy. They're concerned about outsiders coming into their unit. So I respectfully request that you not implement the rental inspection program.
Thank you, Bob. Alicia.
Good evening, council. The following information I am about to present to you is information obtained from the city website. On September twenty-second, two thousand and ten, ordinance thirty-six seventy-six passed Meadville City Council, which amended Article seventeen twenty-one, which is the Property Maintenance Code. Under Article seventeen twenty-one point oh four, you will find the following statement. The International Property Maintenance Code, two thousand and nine edition, as published by the International Code Council, Inc., here I am referred to as IPMC, is hereby adopted as a property maintenance code for the city of Meadville for the regulation and control of buildings, structures, premises and facilities as therein provided. And each and all of the regulations, provisions, conditions and terms of this International Property Maintenance Code are hereby incorporated, adopted and made a part hereof as if fully set forth in this code, with the additions, insertions, deletions and changes as set forth in this article. With the exception of the carbon monoxide detectors, every single item that your proposed inspection program would inspect for are already things that are covered within our current city code. Some of them are almost word-for-word copies. I'm going to give the example sinks, tub and/or shower and toilets. The proposed inspection items read as follows. Sinks must be maintained in a sanitary, safe working condition with hot and cold running water. Tub and/or shower shall be in every dwelling unit and shall be maintained in a sanitary, safe working condition with hot and cold running water. Toilet must flush and work properly. The IPMC reads the following. Looking at Section five oh two point one briefly, it states, "Every dwelling unit shall contain its own bathtub or shower, lavatory, water closet and kitchen sink, which shall be maintained in a sanitary, safe working condition." Section five oh five point one states, "Every sink, lavatory, bathtub or shower, drinking, fountain water closet or other plumbing fixture shall be connected to either a public water system or to an approved private water system." All kitchen sinks, lavatories, laundry facilities, bathtubs and showers shall be supplied with hot or tempered and cold running water in accordance with the International Plumbing Code. I could give each and every single section if you would like, but it's all in there. As I stated earlier, though, carbon monoxide alarms were not covered in the city code. However, these are covered in depth under a law called the Carbon Monoxide Alarm Standards Act, Senate Bill six zero seven, which was signed into law December eighteenth, two thousand and thirteen. I have the detailed information on what exactly this covers, but for time's sake, I will summarize. This law pertains to all residential properties, meaning single-family and multifamily, whether owner-occupied or rental. Carbon monoxide detectors slash alarms shall be in the vicinity of bedrooms and near any fossil fuel, burning heaters, appliances or fireplaces. Landlords must provide and install the approved carbon monoxide alarms as specified by the law. Maintenance responsibility for carbon monoxide alarms is the property owner's responsibility during any period of vacancy. Tenants are responsible to maintain the alarm and replace batteries as needed during their tenancy. Tenants must notify the landlord in writing of any deficiencies pertaining to their approved carbon monoxide alarm. There are two to four different phone numbers you could call to report property maintenance issues within Meadville, depending on what page you get your information from on the city website. I would highly suggest simplifying the process. Instead of four different phone numbers and needing to know what one we need to call, a more user-friendly approach would be to have one phone number, as well as one designated email and potentially a form right on the city website, all of which will go to all code enforcement officials. By simplifying the reporting process, our residents may feel more confident in making reports and knowing it is going to the proper authority. This would also ensure a timely response of an official. If a tenant is reporting their own rental unit, this negates the concern of consent to enter as well as the concerns expressed for their privacy as the invitation to enter the property would have been served when a report was made. The bottom line is, we have a property maintenance code that covers everything you intend to cover and then some, and we have enforcement officers in place. What we need to do is find the best way to utilize them and improve our current system. We don't yet, need yet another thing to cost the city more money. As has already been discussed, the fees likely won't cover the full cost of the program. Why add additional burden and hardship to all involved? Right now, our city is estimated to be one million dollars in the hole. We can't technically afford to pay all the people we're already paying and we want to potentially add more to that. The final bit of information I leave you with is this. The Erie Registration and Inspection Program, as of a report given at a study session on April twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, has a total of seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in delinquent fees. This is a substantial increase in delinquencies from the two hundred and thirty thousand, which was reported in two thousand and eighteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Monica?
Yes. I actually have pictures that go with my speech. If you could just look at them, pass them down, I only did one copy. Thank you.
So has anyone heard of implied warranty of habitability? You should all be familiar with this and be able to see that the proposed rental inspection program duplicates yet another law already in place. Regardless of if a renter, if their lease is written or oral, regardless of the landlord rents the apartment as is and has a separate agreement signed stating such, the landlord still must provide a safe and sanitary home to tenants. There is absolutely no way to sign this away for the landlord or even the tenant. No matter what, this law is effective and available for tenants. A quick Google search results in multiple resources educating tenants and landlords about this. One website I found was pawhelp.org. This website not only describes the law, what is covered and what resources or remedies are available to the tenants if their landlord is not upholding the safe and sanitary housing, but it has many other resources as well. So what is covered under this warranty of habitability? Hot and cold running water, defunct sewage systems, the ability to secure the leased premises with locks, lack of heat, leaking roof, insect and rodent infestations, unsafe floors and quite a bit more. So again, just about everything in the rental inspection program is covered elsewhere as we continue to state and prove to you with accurate and current resources. Now, I would like to get into a clarification I feel is needed after the last town hall meeting. In no way were us landlords stating all tenants are a problem. Just as we ask you not to lump all of us good landlords in with a very small handful that are less than desirable, we can also understand that not all tenants or individuals in general are the same. A lot of our tenants begin to feel like family to us. After my recent wedding, I had tenants calling just to congratulate my husband and I. They didn't need anything, they simply wanted to show and extend kindness. If we were such terrible people, I really don't think events like that would occur. And that is not the only example I can give. As I stated, not all tenants are the same. Some have returned the apartments in such great condition, we gladly return their full security deposit. On the other hand, unfortunately, some tenants have returned their apartments in less than stellar conditions. As the property owner, it is now my responsibility to return that safe unit to a safe, sanitary, inhabitable condition. I can't rent that apartment until it is safe and fixed. The particular unit I have shown you in the pictures and I'm referencing has had sat empty for two months while we spent whatever free time we did have fixing and upgrading that rental. After it was all said and done, we had put another three thousand dollars into it after two years of renting it. That does not count for our actual labor, the blood, sweat and tears that went into that apartment. We could not put a price on. After seeing the finished product, though, I would still have to say that it was well worth it. I, I'm very pleased with how the apartment turned out. And we now have a property that our tenants can be proud of. They are safe in the apartment, it is sanitary, and we have completely renovated a previously abandoned duplex and put it back onto the tax rolls again. By doing the work ourselves, we can offer this three-bedroom, pet-friendly apartment for seven hundred dollars a month plus utilities. A quick Craigslist search showed me multiple one-bedroom apartments renting for six hundred dollars a month. Therefore, I would need to assume our rent amount is more than fair, even considering the current inflation rate and added expenses we have incurred. But I believe the before and after pictures I have provided speaks volumes in this regard versus little of me trying to fight to keep the businesses I had to work my butt off for. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Ron Irwin.
I'm here once again to speak in regards to the rental inspection and registration program. If you truly wanted to hear our concerns and have our input, you would not have invited us to a roundtable meeting that limited our time to speak about our concerns. The Meadville Tribune quoted Ms. Manano as saying, "The existing system is reactive and the proposed code would be proactive." I've worked maintenance all my life and I would like to know how she determined that it was a proactive instead of reactive approach. As for the subcommittee meeting, we are still waiting for the name of the chemical that you claim the inspector will spray themselves down with to prevent cross-contamination of bedbugs, fleas, pet dander, et cetera. While you're at it, we need to see the material safety data sheets on this product. After all, if you're bringing in a chemical into our buildings that our exterminator doesn't even know exists, we have the right to know the proper personal protective equipment that our tenants will need to wear, if the pets need to be removed from the building, and if mechanical ventilation will be required during the inspector's visit. And what about liability issue if the inspector passes the property and then there is a fatal accident? Is the city of Meadville prepared to be held responsible? Moving on, since we found out, found out at the subcommittee meeting, several people were unaware the two thousand and ten, Meadville adopted the two thousand and nine International Property Code, which I do have a copy of too. I've, actually, we have the two thousand and fifteen, as you can see with thumb tap because we actually use it quite extensively. But we found that, you know, several people did not even read it, didn't know it was adopted or anything. So I, I'm kind of curious as to how many council members took the time to read it. Did you discover Section one oh four point three regarding right-of-entry? Or Section one seven two one point one two B about obtaining a search warrant to inspect a property? The fact is, the current code allows you to enter a property without another program and more codes. If you had read the current code, you would notice every issue in the proposed program is already addressed. Now enforcement is another issue, but it is addressed. Why do I say enforcement is another issue? The current code addresses boarded-up windows. However, we can find boarded-up windows all around Meadville. This, this one actually is even a favorite because it's the back porch that's falling off the, the house and has been for years. This, the, the building on the corner of Willow and Chula. A couple of days after I questioned its bladed condition, we received a notice of high weeds around our building. Speaking of weeds, maybe we should take and drive out around council members' properties if we want to take care of the weeds. We didn't have to go very much further up Willow Street to discover a tarp roof. Based on the condition of the tarp, we can assume it wasn't recently put up there. This is also covered in the two thousand and nine IPMC, but still remains. I'm sure Gary Johnson passes this property on a regular basis. It's located on Baldwin Street. I didn't take time to count the number of code violations, but I have to wonder why it's been allowed to remain in this condition for such a long time. It is to the point it became a blatant influence, which is also covered in the current code, as well as demolition, should that be deemed the necessary route. I could go on, but since my time is limited, I will end my tour with a property that recently made the newspaper. The property is owned by our very own mayor. Even after receiving the code violation notices, she failed to make the repairs and went to court over it. To date, there is still a tarp on her roof.
Mr. Irwin.
Your past five, you're, you're.
And finally, the last Saturday, we drove past one of our buildings only to see the neighbors had garbage piled up on our building. We tried to call the, the city, but apparently the city does not find code violation. Important enough that because the message said, "Would you call back in convenient." So we called the fire department, we were told they wouldn't do anything. The next call was to the police, they apparently did speak with the president because some of the staff was apparently.
Patrick Rice.
I'd just like to say, well done in comparison to a number of communities throughout the United States. If you watch nightly news, there are problems everywhere. We have our share of problems as well. But I think the way in this meeting is a good example of it. The way our problems are being handled, I think we deserve a pat on the back. And not because it's my first night, but I think we're doing a commendable job. Thank you.
Thank you. Paula. Zepplin?
Yes.
Is that, is that right?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
I'm very much not in favor of this. I will speak on her behalf also. She lives on a fixed income, on a widow's pension. And also, as the other gentleman back there, by the time that she pays her monthly bills, she has nothing left. So an extra cost, does she get her diabetes medicine or does she pay it? That's what we're looking at. Hillcrest has done a wonderful job. She has lived up there for over fifty years. Whenever she needs something, they're there. And they have done a wonderful job. They do the home inspections, you know, they give out batteries, they put in the smoke detectors, carbon monoxide. They give the furnace filters, everything, every year, free of charge. If this was implemented, it would hurt so many people, not just senior citizens, but normal people who are working and struggling and just can't afford this extra cost. And like some of the other ones have said, if they're, you know, they do their annual inspections. I wouldn't want some stranger coming into her house. They know, you know, they all know her and she knows every one of the workers and she feels, you know, comfortable and secure. And then this other gentleman was talking about, you know, chemicals that were going to be used. She's got a lot, a lot of health issues. She couldn't be around them chemicals. So I am very, very much against this.
Thank you, Paula. Glenn Tuttle.
Hello there, my name is Glenn Tuttle and I'm a citizen of Meadville. I oppose these increased regulations. We have laws on the books already. If there is a problem, you report it to either the fire chief and/or a city manager related to issues. Members currently can't follow the regs that are on the books. Let's add more. The increased regulations will increase costs for all consumers and decrease the supply of units. You can have good intentions, you can't break the law of economics. It is what it is. There will be units closed because of these increased regulations. And at forty dollars a unit, it doesn't sound like much. But sixty-four of housing, currently, sixty-four percent of housing currently is rental income. Where's all this money going? Where are we allocating any of the fines and fees? We're not going to make profit from this. Or if we do, to me, it would be, if not illegal, immoral. Another program that we can't afford when we're one million dollars in the hole for a population of twelve thousand-ish five hundred. Uh, let's see, it is an infringement of property rights and privacy. No one asks you to come in our door, stay out. It is that simple. The tax base is already stressed with fifty-five percent of the population currently paying every dime of taxes for good intentions. Quit breaking our banks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Glenn. Cassandra Gonzalez.
Call all the time I want, right? My name is Cassandra Gonzalez. I've been a resident of the city for over thirty years. I've lived in rental property that whole time. My experiences have ranged from great to absolutely awful. I've had some landlords who cared deeply about providing safe, comfortable housing and I have lived in places where my family's health and safety were in very real danger. Some people, sorry, excuse me, second. Some people would ask, "Why would you move into a place that's unsafe?" That's a valid question. The answer isn't always simple. Rentals usually look great during the initial walkthrough, but sometimes end up revealing dangers you don't notice during the brief showing. Potential tenants don't get references from previous tenants to ask if the windows leak during the winter or if the landlord is responsive when the furnace breaks down. As I've said, I've had some horrible experiences. A furnace breaking down on the coldest day of the year. Windows so drafty, my family avoided one level of our house for the entire winter. Leaking roofs that were never addressed and a hole the size of my foot just below the, the steps on our back porch. None of this is pleasant, and that's just some examples, I have many more. None of this is pleasant, but it is a reality in the city where a lot of people don't know their rights or are scared to report violations for one reason or another. I have also had some very good experiences. I regret that I wasn't able to maintain or remain in those properties, but I appreciate the city council for designing a program that rewards good landlords who would regularly pass inspection because there are plenty of those who own property here. I have heard some landlords speak at these meetings about having their own inspections and how they do not need another inspection process. And I would like to address that as I have experienced with this as well. For ten years, I lived in Morgan Village, which is owned by Housing Authority of the city of Meadville. The housing authority inspects all of their rental units yearly for housekeeping and maintenance. In my time there, I complained many times about mold and roaches. I was told to clean the mold with bleach and the policies and treatments in place never eradicated the roaches. I lived in the same place for ten years and I had roaches the whole time. One day, I called the office to report that my family and I were experiencing headaches. Every time the heat kicked on, it was a Friday afternoon and I was told that there wasn't anything I could do until Monday because people were heading home. Luckily for my family, I decided to call the fire department. They discovered that there was a carbon monoxide leak and my family was in danger. They forced the housing authority to take action. I had three children at the time. I had three children at the time, 12, seven, and an infant. If it had been me a decade earlier, I would not have known what to do. What might have happened to us? The housing authority only took action because they were forced to. The housing authority is a government entity with rules and regulations in place. If they can act like landlords, what's stopping a private, a property owner from exploiting poor people? Self policing does not work, not when business and bottom line are a factor in decision making. It took me a long time to realize that when business and property owners talk about being taxpayers in the city, I was not included in that group because I didn't own property, but I want to push back against that. First, I pay per capita tax, but more importantly, I pay my landlord over $10,000 a year to live where I do. I do pay property tax. I just don't get credit for it. I want to thank the city of Meadville for considering this and for all the hard work that's gone into it, both by staff and volunteers. Also, the good landlords who won't have to make repairs for their properties to pass a basic safety inspection. Thank you.
Cassandra. Elizabeth Seerow White?
Seerow White. I so appreciate what Cassandra just shared. I just want to, I want to thank the city for, for taking this on and for doing the right thing. And I just, there's so much hyperbole in this room. This stuff is so basic. It's not a big deal. I take care of my mom's, my mom has a rental property somewhere else and I'm kind of helping with her administrative stuff now. It's just a matter of course, you have to do the inspection. It's like, it's not a big deal if you're doing the right thing to begin with. I'm a landlord. A lot of us that are proposing that we do this here and means a lot of us doing the footwork, talking to people are landlords and will be subject to this. I will gladly be subject to this because that means I'm going to up my game on whatever I need to do. It's just, it's just the right thing and for every person who's against it, there are like thousands that are in support. Many of them feel too intimidated to come and speak here.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Joe Tonkin?
So I'm Joe. I'm also a landlord and I'll echo what Elizabeth just said, which is that I'm in favor of the program mainly because I, I think everybody deserves to live in a safe rental house. And unfortunately, right now, there are too many rentals that are unsafe and unsanitary. I think this program can help with that. I think it is a proactive way so that we're not necessarily relying on tenants to call and make complaints. We can take that burden off them. We can take the possible risk of retaliation away from them. And we can go out there, we can make sure all the rental units are meeting basic safety standards. But I think the main reason why I wanted to speak is because I'm concerned that some renters are being given misinformation about the program. I know that some of the largest landlords, including some of the landlords in this room, have been sending out letters to their renters that are talking about rent increases if this program passes. And I think everybody needs to know that this is part of a tactic that's meant to stop the program. And I say this because I've been, I've attended their meetings back in 2019. After Larry and Autumn were elected, the landlords started to meet, meet regularly to talk about rental licensing. Some of the people that are here were in attendance in those meetings and it was clear right from the beginning that the point of these meetings was to stop this program from becoming a reality in Meadville. And one of the strategies that some of the landlords devised was to create a form letter that they could send to their renters and that letter would tell them that rents would go up $20, $50, even $100 if this program weren't included. Now, keep in mind, they never settled on a number because the program did not exist. It still does not exist. They didn't know the cost, but the facts didn't matter because the point of that letter was to scare and intimidate the renters into opposing the program. The actual cost of this program, the correct information, is it's looking like it's going to be a little over $3 a month, right? So to put that in perspective, I own a two-bedroom rental unit and I make $600 a month on that unit. Now, that's on the lower end of the rental market. Census says that the average, the median rent in Meadville is $717 a month, right? I'm only getting $600 a month for a two-bedroom unit. That's on the lower end. Even still, $600 a month, the cost of this program, the fee will be $3 a month. That comes to less than one-half of 1% of what I make every month in rent. I'll say that again. That $3 fee is less than one-half of 1% of what I make in rent every month, right? The cost is minuscule. Now, of course, it's up to the landlords in this room and elsewhere if they want to pass that cost on to the renters, but renters should know that the cost of this program is $3 a month. And if your landlord is raising your rent more than $3 a month supposedly to cover the cost of this program, that is cost that they are adding on top of that. The actual cost is minuscule. People need to be given the correct information before we can actually have an honest discussion of this program.
Thank you, Joe. Michael Wood?
Hi. Sorry, there was no seating left available. I, I don't have anything really prepared. I, I've missed a lot of meetings that were pertaining to some of these things that are going on. I've tried to keep up and read some of the newspapers and so on. I, I am not in favor of the program. I, I don't think we need one more thing in the city of Meadville. The, the, it's one more fee to pay, it's one more inspection to organize, it's one more schedule to organize with tenants, it's one more, there's just one more thing is over and over again. And there's already a system in place to take care of these things. The, the chief Wiley is, is great to work with. Gary Johnson, you already have people that are handling these things and addressing some of the issues that we have. If some of the tenants are living in bad conditions, that's not good. That, that's not good for anybody. It's not good for the city, period. But maybe an educational promotion, something to give people information of who they need to reach out to and what they need to do would be better than one more, one more thing that everybody has to deal with. We keep getting these things piled on. So there's always just one more rule, one more code, one more whatever it is. And we don't need that anymore. There's enough things going on and there's already a system in place that can handle the things that are here. Maybe people need to be made aware of what's out there, but the system is in place and it has worked for all this time. I don't think we need another thing to pile on top of everything that's already here.
Okay, Michael. Vivian? Vivian or? Shardle? Yeah. Sorry, what, what's your first name?
Virginia.
Oh, you're, sorry, I could not, I thought it was TV.
We're nervous as it is.
Right, you're okay. You're okay.
I just wanted to say I oppose it. I too live at Hillcrest. Everything I wanted to say, they kind of said. We have a great team up there. They take care, get, I mean, yearly inspections and like she said with it, heater filters and, I'm so nervous. Batteries. And if anything's wrong, pick up the phone. I mean, they're there and they're just, there's a, you can't find a better place to live. I love living there. And I just, I think places like that should be exempt if they do their own inspections and maintain. I mean, you can go up there and see how beautiful it is. So I just wanted to say I, you know, I oppose it.
Thank you.
Or we should be exempt.
Thank you. Sorry. Timothy?
I live up at Hillcrest too, and basically everyone said everything I've been thinking too. If they do a good job, we call them, they get right back to us, they get it done ASAP. There's no reason to be doing this if we don't need it. Like if something's broke, you don't need to fix it. And we don't need this because some of us are struggling already with money. I mean, $40 or $3 or whatever may not seem much, but we got to pay rent, bills, medical expenses and all that kind of stuff. And stuff just keeps on adding up and adding up and adding up and eventually you're paying more than what you're making. And that's just not fair to people that are having to pay for something they feel that they don't want or they don't even need.
Thank you. All right, that's, that's all of the, the comments. Notice of executive session?
Your Honor, I know executive sessions have been held since the last meeting.
Approval of minutes, August 17th, 2022. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Rokel?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roba?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Motion to approve town hall minutes, August 25th, 2022.
A move.
Second.
Discussion? Rokel?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roba?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kenders?
Aye.
Communication? Managers reports, events?
So, Your Honor, there's just a couple of events, a number of events happening this weekend. I wanted to note a celebration in Meadville will be at Diamond Park between 12 and 4:00 PM. The city will have a table there dedicated to police and fire. The Wine Brew and Spirits Walk, 3 to 7 PM, beginning at the downtown mall. French Creek Cleanup at the Cambridge Springs Fairgrounds between 11:00 AM and 3:00 PM. This is the last second Saturday community market for the season, running from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And the screening of Enchanto, Encanto will happen at the Art Korean Space with the event beginning at 6:00 PM. Movie starting at dusk. I also wanted to mention, if you didn't see it in today's paper, that the city received a $300,000 grant from DCNR for the rehabilitation of Heidi Cooper Park. This was matched with about $450,000 of Community Development Block grant funding to complete Phase 1 of the rehabilitation project.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Council Subcommittee Reports. We'll go first. Housing and Economic Development. We have asked staff to bring all the work that was done for the proposed rental registry, residential registry and rental licensing program to council.
Yeah, we met, you know, a few weeks ago, a few weeks ago, and we are working to organize around community input for American Rescue Plan Act funds, how the city will spend its next allocation, hopefully two of three, but certainly two of two. We are moving forward with a, a survey, the kind of components of, of which are being sourced from various plans that the city has, has had done over the years, things that are outstanding that we haven't had money to do before. So folks will get a chance to weigh in on, right, whether, whether we should look at using the money to fund some of those programs, more initiatives and as well as like a live in-person, kind of town hall event around that as well. And so staff is working on that survey. I think Gretchen and I got our input into staff last week?
Yes.
So, I think, right? I did.
Oops.
Did you do it? Okay. Gretchen did.
This is my fault, sorry.
Okay. But, so, so we're working with staff. Staff is mainly taking lead on developing that survey. And we'll probably review it as a subcommittee and then bring it back to, to council when it's already worked on. American Rescue Plan Act funds public for our priority set at the beginning of the year.
Finance?
A couple of quick things, looking into fee structures for existing fees versus proposed. And I understand that there is some grant money out there for technology, computers and software for police departments. I believe that we are exploring that.
Gretchen, anything?
I was going to have Mary Ann announce that. Great news, about $300,000. Last to say.
Okay. Old Business, Authorities, Boards and Commissions?
Your Honor, you will see in your packet the list of applicants that we received for the vacancies. We did not receive any applicants for the vacancy on the Recreation Authority, so we will be re-advertising that. But there are several applicants for the Environmental Advisory Council and then also we have four applicants for the Market Authority. So we are just looking for an appointment of who is going to serve on those interview boards.
For the Environmental Advisory Council, I propose, Jamie and I, as well as staff, maybe Katie and Peter, maybe my proposition. We may discuss it.
I would object. This should be a council function. It's a new committee. I think we need the input of all members of council to interview all of the advocates.
So they would have to be public meetings?
That would be a problem.
So we're going to get 15 people to come to the same?
We hold it when they can come.
Sure. So I think, Jim, what you're saying, like, that's just your reading, right? There's nothing in our appointment policy around the establishment of a new.
There's also nothing about subcommittees pointing.
Right, I didn't suggest a subcommittee. I suggested that. That was Jamie's. So I suggested Jamie and I, which is not a subcommittee. And is there precedent for all of council appointing? I mean, because we do, right? We have to, we have to, we appoint them, like, we vote on them as a slate or individually, like, they'll come in front of council, so we will have that opportunity. I, honestly, I feel like it's just going to slow the stuff down.
So we would have to have, how many? What, we got 15 for the EAC, so 15 public interviews and then to try to, to do that. But each, like, each one, we vote on anyway, it's council. Jim, you're saying you just want it to be in the interview? Is that what you're thinking? That you want all of council to be in the interview instead of voting on it?
I think all of council should be in on the interviews because this is a new committee. We haven't even decided where the committee might want to go.
We have. It's, they were established to work on the climate action plans and pollination.
That's, that's pretty nebulous.
It's not. It's a plan that we adopted as a, as a body, right? So it's not nebulous. It's pretty, it's pretty straightforward.
How they, how they go about it remains to be seen. We don't even know how many people we're going to have. Whether it's going to be five or seven or whatever.
Seven, the ordinance says seven.
But I still think we need to have all members of council involved. Even if you divide it up, if you have sets of two or three council members interviewing some candidates and two others interviewing others, that way we make sure we get a good balance and a cross-section of the community.
So. Can I ask, just so I understand the discussion point? Was the, was the initial motion to appoint a committee of two to conduct the mission interviews?
Um, it made two council members and two staff was what I had, I guess, motioned.
To interview the 15 and then come to council with the recommendation?
Right, to, to, to move through that appointment process, which doesn't even necessarily stipulate that to interview all 15, but to go through the interview processes.
There is, I mean, in the past, that is similar to what council may have done. I don't know if we've always incorporated staff, but that is, I believe. I'm not sure if there's a precedent for all of you meeting, although you've done it before when you filled vacancies in council. We've done that before for selecting the city managers. So I think there's probably some precedent, but I can't recall what the appointment policy says to that.
The appointment policy is, yeah, the appointment policy says that it'll be a committee of council members and Authority Board and Commission members.
It's one or two.
One or two. And it was worded that way to prevent the need to advertise for those interviews.
So we have that precedent, which is along the lines of, look, you want to vote.
Right.
At least there's a motion, right? Was it, did you leave that?
No, but this is just, we're just discussing. She was just proposing for that. We're just discussing who would. Normally, we discuss and, and everybody says, no, please do it.
So right now, it's discussion?
It's just, yeah, yeah.
So it seems with what you're, what you're raising as a discussion point is consistent with the policy along the same lines.
I believe in the past, it's just been the mayor's appointment of, of two members to serve.
Actually, before, two years ago, there was no such point.
And then.
So we have, we have 200 years of doing things differently.
Correct.
Now we just have two years.
What, what, so what was it before the, you know, in the 200 years, it was just appoint whoever we wanted to?
Right, and now we have a appointment policy where everybody can apply.
Right, and now we have a, a appointment policy where everybody can apply, we advertise it, um, and, um, they, you know, more than one person is able to, uh, come together, discuss and pick, right? Instead of me going around and asking somebody to be on a board and then, and then they'll be on the board, right? So it, it's kind of gotten rid of just a, a bunch of my friends being on a board, right? It was a...
It's more formal, for sure.
Right, right, um, and, um, it's, we're able to notice and, and people put their applications in, people that may have never done that before, so, um, I, I have to think that the last two years, that was, that was a good thing, and you guys voted on that, right? You were on that to vote on this new appointment policy?
I was here.
Good. So, uh, I think that, um, you know, having all of council is a little excessive, especially trying to get this, this done, um, and, I mean, unless, does anybody else have jokes?
I'm, I'm fine with, um, someone meeting, two people meeting, um, because I believe there's going to be minutes, um, and I can call someone. My reason, I work, so I, I know personally, it would be hard for me, I don't know, uh, anybody else's schedule, but for me, I would be comfortable with, uh, reading the minutes and then question if I had any questions, um, and give, because I...
So there, there wouldn't be minutes, just it is not a public, the interview, but we could take notes and share them, or, or if we come back to the council with our conversation.
I would feel comfortable with that, you know, something I, I know that I can ask questions off of, because I can't be there, so...
Right, and we all have the applications, um...
And I think it wouldn't, I just would be concerned about mixing matching people, because you don't have that constant of two people, yours are, like, interviewing across the board. That would be my concern.
That's precisely your point, you get a better cross-section of the representation in the community if you have groups of two people interviewing various candidates.
Hey, you can do that across the different, right? So market authority is coming up right now, so is E. A. C., right? So in the past, the precedent we've had is that a subcommittee of one to two council members and one to two committee members, in this case, you know, have an E. A. C. yet, is formed to interview the candidates, right? Uh, one can happen simultaneously to be formed and interview market authority candidates, right? We can have two separate subcommittees. I think that would be the way to go about it, and we can ensure some diversity, um, that, that way too. And again, we've got that backstop of, we have to vote, right, on the appointments, um, by the entire council. Right. Should I make a motion?
Is that something we need, is to make a motion and then we vote on this, or what, what do we, like, because normally it's just, we just...
There is an agreement by consensus thing to go forward, I, I mean, we have a policy in place.
Yeah, right, so if there's a...
If we're gonna deviate from that, there needs to be a motion, otherwise, it's, and there's no consensus, and we probably do need to make a motion.
All right, so consensus is?
You know.
We've got, I mean, we've got a consensus to, the regular...
Why don't, so we're clear, go ahead and make a motion.
Right, so I, I move that the subcommittee to, um, uh, propose members of the, uh, Environmental Advisory Council be Jamie and I, um, and then it's probably up to Mary Ann to then assign whatever staff, right? It is gonna be in on those, right?
Okay.
So Jamie and I. Is the motion open?
Can I have a second?
Second.
Um, discussion, did we already discuss?
We've already discussed.
Okay.
Roca?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
No.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
So we have market authority to do this, huh? Yeah, market authority, Jamie, want it?
I'll take it.
Okay, okay, market authority and who else? Well, we don't do that anymore, we remember it used to be you and I. Yeah, well, just you and I, yeah. Okay, so, yeah, yes, I'm on the market, yes. All right. Okay, so then, wait, I mean, that sounds good, um...
So I will work with, uh, the two committees to get those interviews scheduled.
Right on. Thanks, Katie. Um, discussion, comments on proposed zoning ordinance.
Uh, so, Your Honor, the City's Planning Commission met Thursday, September first, uh, to discuss the comments, uh, that were on the zoning ordinance that council sent back to the planning commission. They reviewed those, um, and the commission just wants to take some additional time to digest those comments before making any kind of additional recommendations. So just wanted to give an update, there's no action item on that, just an update.
I appreciate that they're taking that.
Yeah. Um, new business, discussion, update to city storm water management ordinance.
Uh, so the city has a storm water management ordinance, um, and the city is also a designated M. S. Four community, a municipal separate storm sewer system community, uh, so as part of this, we're required to have this ordinance that has been passed down by the D. P. D. P. will sometimes update what they consider to be the model ordinance, they have done this, um, and this model ordinance is included in the packet. Uh, the city's engineer, Ashley Porter, has compared the city's current ordinance with the model ordinance and determined that the model ordinance is actually less restrictive than the city's current ordinance, um, and so there are some recommendations for tweaking, um, the current ordinance to be in line with the model ordinance, but it'll just be some minor tweaks that you will see, Shaffer is working on that, correct?
With Ashley Porter?
So this is just an update, that you will see that coming before you for, um, first and second reading.
So we're required to tweak everything that they mandate?
Correct.
Love the conversation right there.
Okay. Um, discussion, proposed residential rental licensing program.
So following the Housing and Economic Development Subcommittee meeting on August thirty-first, the Subcommittee voted to move the proposed rental inspection ordinance to council for full discussion. In your packet is a summation of the comments received on the August twenty-fifth council landlord Town Hall, the Town Hall presentation and a memo outlining the details of the program set forth by the Subcommittee for council's consideration. Gary Johnson is here to give a presentation, uh, for everybody, so everybody's kind of on the same page as far as what the proposed rental licensing program consists of.
All right, um, this will be a bit of a slimmed-down, um, kind of presentation that we did, uh, last time, Tim, so don't worry about it, it's only about eight slides. So, again, this is, this is largely the same that we talked about at the landlord meeting a couple of weeks ago. So some basic features, again, we talked about this, would require all non, non-underoccupied residential units to be licensed and inspected, um, would require an inspection every two years at the beginning, um, of course, the purpose is to protect the public health and safety of housing throughout the city. A little bit of context, as we went over last time, the city had, uh, we inspect, um, all commercial occupancies, boarding houses, nursing homes, bed and breakfasts, daycare centers, and college dorms, we already inspect all of that. But we do not systematically inspect the sixty-four percent of housing in the city that is rental. So really, just in response to specific complaints, I think we all are aware of how that works. So the proposed structure, it is performance-based, uh, trying to reward well-performing properties, uh, those that pass inspections, two, two inspection rounds in a row, that would be every, uh, every other year. We give that into every four years for inspections. We did talk about, um, have requiring a local, uh, local contact, of course, if the owner is not within forty miles of the city, they're, you're required to have a local contact that would be able to contact in case of any immediate, uh, issues with property. The city, as proposed, we, the city would handle the registration end of things, uh, finding the units, registering the units, getting information, and then the other end of it would likely be a third party agency, potentially building inspection underwriters, who would actually do the, the inspections, and then, of course, the city would enforce it on the back end if any issues came up. So from a registration standpoint, um, we did talk at the landlord meeting, having it every one year, uh, but at the most recent, uh, Subcommittee meeting, the committee decided to move that to every other year, uh, to coincide with the inspection requirement, so that would bump that act out to now, every, every two years, as proposed, to council. Again, registration would only be issued, that, that's when the, uh, fee would be required, so if it's every two years, then the fee to cover that would be every, uh, would be seventy-six dollars. Again, provide the name of the local responsible agent, and as proposed to council, it would require property tax refunds and storm water fees to be paid up at time of, um, at time of registration. That's something I think that, um, from a staff perspective, I think council can, can talk about and say, is that something we really wanna require? Does that really have to do necessarily with straight-up health and safety? Is that something we just wanna pull from the application anyway, if we're gonna do it every two years? Maybe that's not as useful as otherwise could be. So, uh, as we license it, um, of course, license, we require that top rated residential rental unit, who would just certify that the unit has been inspected for compliance, um, and again, every two years. If, if a unit fails inspection, then it would be given thirty days to schedule a follow-up and get everything taken care of, if it fails again after the, after the, the follow-up inspection, which would be on the third inspection, then a fee would be imposed, which would be the second follow-up inspection. Again, if the unit passes two consecutive inspections over the course of four years, then it would go to a four-year inspection and registration requirement, as opposed to every two years as initially proposed. Yeah, again, I'm not gonna go through all of these, and, and it's been discussed a little bit earlier, but these are all requirements indeed that are already in our inspe- our property maintenance code, that's, that's true. Um, the only difference is, again, it is not in our local property maintenance code, is the carbon dioxide detector, which would be an additional requirement as proposed by the committee. Again, I'm not gonna go through all that, and it's kind of small, obviously, but I believe this is on our website, or will be on our website for anyone to review in detail if they, if they'd like to. And finally, exemptions, um, from that, of course, um, owner-occupied units, uh, family-occupied units, uh, for immediate family, and then, of course, a vacant unit. If it's vacant, it doesn't have to be registered, because it's not a rental unit, um, it's not occupied, it just needs to be, um, licensed and inspected prior to actually renting that out and having it occupied. That's it. So again, that was just a slimmed-down version of what we talked about at the last meeting, just so everybody's kind of on the same page, change to potentially going to every other year for registration and, uh, licensing to coincide with inspections.
Okay, so it's inspection every two years, um, and after two inspections, if they pass, then your inspection goes to every four years?
It would go to every four years, and then if they could, could continue with that, it would be every four years, so long as they pass inspection and everything is good.
And the registration fee, uh, it ends up being the same amount, it just only has to be paid every two years, right? So that's, the seventy-six is worth two years of...
Correct, and it would go to every, if it went to every four years, then, of course, that would cut the fee in half, because you'd have half the inspection and registration, or half the inspection and registration and registration.
So every four years, it'd still be seventy-six dollars, is that what you're saying?
Correct, it would be half of what it would otherwise be, because we're only inspecting and registering half the time.
Right, and that's where the reward is, they pay seventy-six dollars and every four years, so it's stretched that way.
That's as, as proposed.
So do we have any questions?
So, no, is, are there no questions? I'm sorry. Question, comment, comments?
Comments, no.
Jamie, you got one?
Well, okay, if safety is an issue, then every structure should be included in the inspection process, including college housing, rooming houses and owner-occupied structures. And if there's going to be a rental inspection program, there shouldn't be any price breaks on fees for anyone, which means that if there's a thousand, rooms that are college dorm rooms, there should be a thousand fees charged for those rooms, because those are individual housing units. Is that what your plan intends?
What, how are, how is Allegheny currently inspected? How are college dorms currently inspected? What does that, is there a fee?
Yep, so Chief Wiley is actually here.
Where?
What was your question on Allegheny College Dorms?
Um, yeah, is there a fee that they pay? Because they're already inspected, is there a fee?
They're, they're considered under the commercial, they get, it's forty dollars an hour and it's eighty dollars for every hour past that. They have changed the under, cheap, head trick. The dorm rooms were separated out, we do the common areas, things of that nature, the dorm rooms, they actually are not.
So it's just the common rooms right now?
Yes.
Would that be included in this?
Sure.
I agree with you, Jim.
Okay. Just a couple of questions on inspectors that apparently are going to hire an independent firm. Uh, oh, yeah, a couple other questions. I would argue that there should be renter registration as part of the program, and that when there are violations that are clearly responsible, the renter, that the renters ought to be cited, not the owners. If someone throws garbage out in the street instead of putting it in a can, that's not a landlord, that's a tenant. Yet we cite the landlord for that, and I think that if you're going to do this, you need to put the blame and the cost where it belongs. So that they should be cited for the issues they cause, not the landlords.
Jim, before you go on, can I ask, like, Rena and Gary, because you guys have done research, do you know, are there such things as renter registration?
Yes.
Are they separate, there, is, is it a separate program?
It would be part of the application process, the registration process, um, generally what I've seen, and Rena can correct me if I'm wrong, because she did more research on this, is that essentially with the registration and the application, it says, okay, please provide the name of every, pretty much every occupant over the age eighteen, essentially is what they typically ask for. So from a, for a renter registration standpoint, that's really what you see.
And that ought to be available for the assessment of the capital tax.
Um, is, is that what they are used for, Rena and Gary? Is that what, when they say renter registration?
At least in a few cases, yes.
Okay, I think that when, I, if I'm not mistaken, when we did the Subcommittee meeting, um, we, we opted not to have renter registration, just like we opted not to have a, um, uh, mandatory, um, registration of how much the rent is, right? Like, because that was, that was a lot of information that, um, you didn't need for safety, right? We didn't need, um, to know what everybody is charging for rent in each unit, um, and we thought that, um, you know, a tenant registration was, um, if we're not gonna be using it for, for capital, then there was no need for us to, to do it, since it was just a business inspection, and we were using it for what it is, a, a business inspection. So that's why we opted, we either wanted to do all of it, or, or, you know, they, we put it together, or we... So it was in or out, and I think that's why we didn't do it, because I know that people are opposed to having how much they charge rent also listed.
I don't have a problem with not including that, I have no problem with that. But if it's a safety issue, you also need to know where their children...
Right.
And that would be an argument in favor of renter registration, and, uh, as I said, for a city that's looking for money, you assess for capital tax, but there are people who are not being assessed that should be assessed. If that's the case, either you eliminate the capital tax entirely, and you're gonna have another hole in your budget, or you take the steps necessary to make sure that everybody who is supposed to be paying for capital tax is assessed for doing so.
Again, uh, I, I don't think that we need our, the rent, like, that's renter landlord information, right? Landlord gets all of the renter information, the landlord gets to charge whatever they want for rent, we leave that up to the landlord, right? That's their, their relationship, the city is just doing a, a business inspection, right? Like, so we don't, you know, we're not doing a renter inspection, I think that, um, there is a, a difference in, in that, and I think... I think that there is a, a difference in, in that, and I think that's where maybe privacy comes in.
And I respectfully disagree.
Okay. Do you have any other, I, I mean, anything else we, we can discuss, or?
Oh, we can probably discuss things for a couple of hours.
Right.
I mean, the comment's been made, it's only three dollars a month with this program. And the implication is, why don't landlords absorb it? The real question is, is anybody here working the same job this year as last year and working for less? And the answer is, I highly doubt it. You're working for as much or more. So when you assess fees to landlords and expect that they will not pass that on, you are in essence asking landlords to work for less. If you don't do that with wage earners, why would you do it with landlords?
Did, who asked the landlord to pass on that three dollars?
I read some stuff in, on Facebook, in fact.
On Facebook, you can't believe it.
It must be true.
Must be true.
Well, some of the people who are proposing this ordinance are the ones that made that comment.
Okay, well, that, that is one hundred percent up to landlords. That the city of Middel cannot tell landlords how much to charge for rent.
They're not saying they can't, they're saying the expectation is that they ought not to.
I think the expectation is, is that more than three, three dollars, right? I think that that is how it would be read. I don't know, I didn't read it, but...
So if a landlord has to give up a day of work to be present, who bears that cost?
Well, landlords that are already doing the inspections, right? They can make those, those inspections and coincide with, with the city as, as much as possible, right? So we don't want anybody to take time off of work. So if they're already doing inspections or are scheduling, especially big places, there's, I don't think there's any reason that the city and, and big places can't coincide, right? And do the best that they can to work together to make it, you know, a one-time thing instead of a double. And again, it's, it's every two years, right? Like, it's not every month, it's not every one year, it's every two years. And it, like, we have some really great landlords here. And I think, was it, was it Monica who had the, the house? I think that was, what, eleven seventy-five South Main, right? I, again, my sister grew up in that house, I knew it as soon as I saw it.
It's open, I should have checked.
Right, and it is, um, it's, it, you, it looks beautiful, right?
Thank you.
So that house, I'm assuming with all the work that, that she put in, that wouldn't be inspected more than once every four years?
Should know.
Right? Because you, you did a, have a job, right? So, you know what I mean? So, so I guess what I'm saying is, is one inspection every four years is, you know, how much? You know what I mean, it may be one, one day, which is...
But initially, if you're talking thirty-eight a year, two years upfront, so really you're charging seventy-six for an inspection.
Seventy-six for registration and then inspection.
Right, because...
For two years, yes, of a registration.
So it's not just thirty-eight dollars, but, and that's going to be upfront.
Thirty in a year, yes.
From the thirty-eight a year.
Yes, thirty in a year. Yeah, three dollars a month. Does, and, and again, you know, again, we've got some really great landlords out there. And some of these places are, are awesome and they're great. Does anybody else have any?
So Chief Wiley is here just to give you an idea of how the inspection, the current inspection program works, just so everybody has that, that knowledge.
Thank you, Chief.
How we work ours is a complaint basis. We get those either from landlord calling on tenant. We get a lot of those where they state they don't have water, get the things of that nature. Tenant versus landlord, same method. We do get ones where we find the complaints while we're on emergency calls. We find a lot of, the correct term is high-content environment. We find a lot of those, both privately owned and rental, things of that nature. We may find extension cords running throughout, different hazards that we've noted. Those we, and we write those as we find them. We notify when the landlord notifies us, we have them to notify the tenant under their lease, whatever their rules are, some are twenty-four hours, some are forty-eight. And we try and schedule it where the landlord is there with us, so we're just not showing up at any meetings. Same thing for when the tenant calls us. We try our best, we have the landlord notified so that they're aware. There are times where they've never been notified of the violations. We notify them, we try and have them come along if at all possible, things of that nature. I mean, we don't, we don't go knocking on the doors, we just, when they call us, we...
Right, is that, is that where that reactive comes in? You have to have a, a actual complaint before you go in, and...
As I said, unless we're on an emergency call and it's something very obvious that we note. If it's a safety issue.
And you, you mentioned that there's a lot of those.
Of?
Of when you're on an emergency call.
We've been finding quite a few, especially since COVID, of the high-content residents, which are a safety issue for not only the person living there, emergency personnel coming in. Tripping hazards, just a lot of things piled up.
Is that what the rest of us call boarding?
Yes.
I think everyone's definitely familiar with that issue.
Who would be cited for that? The tenant or the landlord?
Those are, if it's, that's the tenant's problem for that. We notify the landlord because some do know, some don't know.
And you're saying it when they're, when they're tripping hazards and, and things like that?
Yes, when they're high-content, it's the occupants write-up.
And then what happens? Do you write them up and are they charged?
Write them up, they, everybody is given so much time to make corrective actions. If it's the elderly, we try and make sure, we, we go through, we contact Activating, that there's some services we can try and help them with. We check and see if there are CHAPS, anybody like that is involved. And then if not, we offer, can we try and help you get some services?
What about, right, so, so you all enforce the International Property Maintenance Code that was cited earlier. Do you find violations of, of that code on calls? That you see that weren't, that weren't necessarily called in and, and reported, but you find them?
We find things that are just blatantly obvious, that are out in the open. Sometimes the people were, they'll bring it to your attention, hey, is this a problem? Whatever that may be. We look at it, yes, if it is, we go from there. We walk through, we'll test smoke alarms. As you see them, you test them. They're not working, all right, we open them up, see if there's a battery in it. If there's no battery in it, or we find ones where the battery's in it, but it's just the jar so it doesn't activate, that's tampered. If they have a battery in it where it's dead, which, that happens to people, we try and offer, here's a battery, let's put this in. Now, if they're blatantly where they have just tampered, removed the smoke alarm itself, the battery, whatever, there's a good chance you're going to be, you'll be cited for that.
If they're not there?
Yes.
And again, that's a, that's a renter that you would cite, but then you'd let the landlord know and then...
Yes.
Okay, if it's a soft porch, that's something you would tell the, the landlord?
The landlord, yes.
Okay, so, okay, and that's, you're seeing those things sometimes on calls?
Yeah, we, we notice on calls, because when you're carrying somebody out of a, out of a residence, you're going to notice if the steps are soft or...
Yeah.
Things of that nature, nothing you're going to notice from the street when you're physically carrying somebody, a little more obvious.
I have two questions. How long does that typical, like, you, like, I'm going to think about, like, when you guys come and inspect my studio. It's usually like fifteen minutes or something?
It all depends on the size of the...
It completely depends on that facility. But like, if you were to do, oh, no, you can't do it, never mind, I'll just, I was just trying to get an idea of, like, time. I have this other question. Someone had said, well, everybody knows who the bad landlord is, sorry, but we don't because we don't have a registry or the bad properties. I mean, could you speak to that? Do you, do you have a sense of that, or is it just like, well, it's a surprise? Like, could you tell us more about that?
We have some names that we deal with more times than all, I mean...
I was just...
But we also have that, we know there's tenants that we deal with that have moved from property to property that are recognized to make.
And have you had to, it's my understanding you've kind of had piecemeal together almost your own semblance of, of a registry, right? Where there's, because, because we don't have a list of all of the landlords that own all of the properties, right? For you to notify the appropriate party.
It's a little bit, it's a little bit easier now with the county GIS site. We'll look up the property, see who the tax bill goes to, at least we have an address to work with. We have occupants who, they honestly don't even know the landlord's phone number or anything like that. So we try and find ways of getting contact information, if nothing else, we have that site to make sure the letter gets through.
And to reiterate, every commercial property is inspected every year, and it's forty dollars?
It's every other year.
Every other year, forty dollars.
To council, okay, yes.
Forty dollars for that?
Forty dollars for the first hour, eighty dollars for any hour after. Yes.
Chief, just a quick question. How many, and this is just, I just want to know, how many properties take more than an hour commercially? A lot, like, eighty dollars seems like a lot, right?
Yeah, I mean, it all depends, you got the hospitals, colleges, those are obviously, those can be several days, the schools.
So they're charged eighty dollars an hour?
Yes, it's, it depends on the, on the structures, the businesses that are in there. Each one is written up separately. Like, your storefront's on Park Ave, one building may be owned by this landlord, but each one is rented by different business.
Okay. So do you have any other questions?
No questions, thanks.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
That's chief.
So my suggestion is concerning the memo, aside from the overall...
Sorry, are we done with discussion? Is that the end? You, you, go ahead.
She's, she's going to...
So the overall, aside from just deciding how you, if the memo and the things proposed in the memo would work for everybody, there are some questions that, very specific questions that would need addressed as well. So for example, registration, under registration, registration will be issued if the owner pays the registration fee, is not delinquent on property taxes, refuse fees, and stormwater fees. As Gary mentioned, council should discuss whether or not they want to include that. And there's some additional items in the memo with kind of similar, does council want to include that? Or should something be framed in a different way? What we can do is really point out those items that need an answer and a decision made on them. Again, aside from the overall gist of the program that's outlined in the memo. So I don't know, if council is prepared to discuss any of the memo tonight, or you want to take another look at it and then have the items pointed out specifically that would need commented on and decided on for next council meeting.
Can we pull items out? Are you prepared to pull those items up tonight to pilot some of the discussion?
Sure.
Right, I guess I'm just thinking, right, if, that, that means we wait for another meeting, and then that means, right, we, we... Even if we can, no care.
So the first one is the own issue of property taxes, refus, fees, stormwater fees associated with the rental unit. If council wants to include those being up to date as a condition of receiving a rental license.
What's the precedent for this? Is this included in other?
Yes.
Did other, did anyone else, did books include water, right? Like, if, I've had that experience where my landlord was not up on their water bill associated with the property, and we got a warning that our water was going to shut, be shut off. I sent Tim a letter once about it, but it wasn't my name, right?
Correct. I don't recall specifically, and Rena, you see that?
This is typical, the refuse, stormwater.
Uh, so this is under registration, is the one, two, fourth bullet point?
Oh, fourth bullet.
So the question really comes in, is, are these items specifically related to health and safety? Water would be related to health and safety, one would think. But does property taxes, refuse fees, and stormwater fees relates directly in council's mind, too?
So what is the intent of this? If someone owns sixty units, and fifty-nine of them are current and the sixtieth one isn't, as this is written, is it going to include registration of all sixty units?
Just that one?
I don't know that that would be the intent of that.
But, but again, what we think is intent and what someone reads down, down the road are two different things.
I think what you're getting at is the unit registered or is the landlord registered, right? Because I think that would be the distinction.
Unit.
It's the unit, so as long as that, there's fees associated, fees and taxes associated with that unit.
I think that the property tax, I think that they include that because if they're super delinquent, then the, the house would go up, right? For sale, and that would be, is that...
They use it as a tool to try to prompt collection of the property tax, that's what that is. I'm not sure that that, well, yeah, that's, that's what they do.
Well, refuse seems like it would be safety, right? I mean, I don't know if they were delinquent, does it, do they stop picking up trash? And it's on the water bill? I don't know, that is kind of... So if it's water and refuses, can we...
I think if there's precedent for including use, then I would feel comfortable including uses of...
Yeah. I, I guess, you know, like, yes, including them, but, you know, like, if they're paying payments on them, if they had a, do you know what I mean? Like, I, I wouldn't be in favor of not giving the, the license if they were, like, you know, trying to get up to date or, or something of that nature. I don't know how we would designate that. I mean, I, I don't know, right?
This is a different, this is purely anecdotal. In the case with my water, right, the landlord was in a legal dispute with the water authority, right? So like, you could claim that they were in progress, right? Or like, working on it, but like, you know, that's, right? Like, that didn't mean anything, they were like, going to get our water dirt up, you know?
Well, and your water was off.
We got a notification that it was coming off.
Okay.
I, I just...
Anyway, so just, just to say that there's like gray area, like, I, I get that, too. I understand the sentiment of it. I don't know how you enforce, like, the gray area of if you're working on it, right? Because it could be legal.
So the other issue comes up with what property, when, what you define property taxes to be delinquent? Because the county would classify those as three years, two years going to a tax claim. Is it after a year that you're considering those delinquent? Is it after two years, you're considering those delinquent? At what point do you consider these items to be delinquent?
And to your point, Mayor, that they, the county allows for those payment plans to occur on delinquent taxes, and somebody could be making payments for five years and those taxes are held by the county, but we would consider them delinquent.
Doesn't, doesn't the bill itself declare delinquency? Because after a certain point in time, you're paying a penalty. So de facto, it's not two years, it's really a few months.
So that's something that, that council will need to decide what you define delinquent to be?
Do we have any, is that, is it a similar definition of delinquent that we use around stormwater? Do we have a...
We have a lot of payment plans for stormwater.
We, what's that?
We have a lot of payment plans.
And they're considered delinquent on the payment plan?
Right.
Can we make a note of that? Like, I mean, I guess it's like, I would make, maybe you want to just make a distinction, distinct distinction, but it's in a payment plan and like, I guess. Or the loss of the water. It doesn't count. Or I don't know, maybe it's...
You're kind of saying that the county, though, is saying it's like a three-year, you have, like, it seems like that is more generous, kind of.
Yeah, if you're... As far as the county tax claim bureau is concerned, if you're delinquent for more than two consecutive years with no established payment plan, that's justification for them to turn it over to tax claim bureau.
I see, so delinquent without a payment plan?
But if you, you can enter into a payment plan, you're still considered delinquent, but they won't turn it over to the tax claim bureau.
Can we include that clause, like, unless entered into a formal payment plan with... Can we include that clause, like, unless entered into a formal payment plan with...
We don't know that, though. That's not...
Right, because the, because property taxes are to the county, right?
Once we turn it over to the tax claim bureau, we're, we consider it delinquent.
And to Jim's point, that once those are turned over at the end of the calendar, right, to the tax claim bureau, and we consider them delinquent at that point. To Katie's point, we don't know that folks have entered into a payment plan with the county.
So, what if we strike property taxes and there's a clause about the payment plan around stormwater, refus, or, or water, right? Those are things that we would know, presumably, if someone had a payment plan going with? Or we could find out?
Water, if it's delinquent, you'll be shut off.
Right.
So, if you're making payments, it won't be shut off. That's pretty crystal clear.
You're making, yeah. Well, is it water and refus?
Together.
Together, in, in the city, right? There are the...
Yes.
Or people, and is that a similar thing? So, refus, there's not like a payment?
There would be a moot point in the city.
And if the weather, water is shut off, they, Gary receives notice and so does the fire department to post it.
Right, because it's, yeah, because it gets posted and it's, you're, it's unenhabitable, correct? So, so, strike property taxes, just include refus and water as, as they stand in stormwater fee? If, if you're in a payment plan? I don't know, is that going to be, stormwater, right?
So, just to think about it a little further. So, people can be on a payment plan, but then become delinquent on the payment plan? And then restate a payment plan? But it happens? So, those are just things to consider when you want a definition section, which I'm assuming is going to be part of, of this as well. That what we consider delinquent would be part of that definition section.
Right. Gary, what are your, what are your, I'm not opinioning your thoughts on the easiest way to do it. I don't want to make you give us your, you know, I mean, your opinion, but you're, you're, you know, you've, you've done a lot with this.
If we're going to focus on health and safety, I think it goes. That's, that was my recommendation. I, I don't think we include any of that. If we're just going to, they have their own, they have their own remedies. Those are taken care of. You know, we can, for stormwater, we can, we have, we have a way to enforce that. Water, water and garbage gets shut off if you don't pay it. Property taxes gets taken by the county if you don't pay it. They all have their ways of being taken care of. If we're talking about health and safety, which is really, from, speaking as a person who will most likely administer this, having to check to see if they're on the payment plan or are you current on the payment plan every month? Do I need to know if they're current? Am I going to pull the license? Those, all, all those things come into play. It doesn't happen just once every two years. If they become delinquent after some certain amount of time, do I pull that license then? And it's not related to the conditions in that apartment.
Is, is it your sense that when they've been included other places, that it's like to get people to get up to date on those, right? So, it's like, not necessarily, all things being equal, it's like it would move things, it would move people forward for payment?
Conceivably, yes. I think the irony there is if we, I don't want to say too much, I guess, but the irony there is if, if we say you're not getting a license because you're delinquent so much on your stormwater, we're precluding that landlord from renting out, getting the money, paying it. So, it kind of shoots ourselves in the foot. It's like falling a permit when someone's taken too long to build. It's like, well, what's the point of that? Then they can't continue to build, you know? It's just, I think, it, it precludes that landlord and that property from being used, you know, when it otherwise could be. It might be a beautiful property and the stormwater is six months behind or whatever. I don't know that that's necessarily a good thing to do from a policy perspective.
Right, from the health and safety inception.
It's not related to the health and safety of the unit.
I think that makes sense.
Me too.
Marion, what was, what was another thing that you wanted to do?
So...
Is there a bunch?
There, there are.
Let's just do it.
So, letter C of that same paragraph states that if the owner lives outside of four mile radius of the city, they'll provide the name of the local responsible agent. Forty miles seem like a...
That'd be someone living in Erie.
Uh, is there precedent?
I don't know what those, there are other ones do that. I'm not sure only a specific mileage, but yes.
It varies. There are some as far as the fifty, some as short as twenty-five. Could go back and look at them, but it's within that ballpark.
How would you guys land on the forty, committee?
Not willing to vote for this, but why don't, why don't you simplify it and say if the owners are not residents of Crawford County? That way you don't have a question that, is it thirty-nine and a half miles or forty point two miles? You know where the county lines are.
Sure. I mean, we, we could do it that way, but like then Erie, right, like it's just right there. I mean, is that what we would do? I don't, that, I, I, yeah. What, I, do you guys know how the forty came into play?
I think it was just in the, in the ballpark of everyone else. I think forty is fine, it's radius.
It was trying, I believe that it was trying to take into consideration the Erie, Erie place too.
I think it would be a radius would be best. I, I agree with Jim. I just hate to, you know, if somebody's Erie County is pretty close up, up north here and so to have to have...
So, you could say even Crawford, if they're not residents of Crawford or Erie County or Warren or something, or, sorry, you could include counties?
Right.
If you need to think about that.
Jim already outed himself and said he's not voting for it, so we're trying to accommodate. I mean, I think forty miles sounds reasonable, right? It allows for Erie, it allows for like just over border in Ohio, right? Because like only a few minutes away, it feels radius.
I think a radius is, is pretty fair.
Forty miles from the city.
Is the police or the fire chief still here?
No.
Did we do, did we do any, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was just wondering if anyone knows any, like, oh, landlords, the out of town landlords.
Erie has a rental inspection program?
We don't pay that. And we don't pay the...
Yeah, we don't have to have an authorized individual. I mean, I've never taken account of the mileage from the office to the property. However, if there is an instance, it takes us, what, forty-five minutes to get up there? We've gone up there in the middle of the night also. And this fine Erie does not require us to have anybody on there for an authorized individual.
Do, do we have any sense? I know we don't have a registry, so hard to know. But do we have any sense of like the concentration, right? Does it like drop off after several years?
I, I'm, I mean, I'm for forty, I would leave it there. If, if that's part of it, right? And I, I think that's just in there because we have, we're hard time with some landlords, right? How many of these are there? I'm just asking one last time. That we need to, just to...
There are, there are a number. And, and some of them are, you know, so the next, the last bullet point on your first page under registration will be with the five hundred dollars per month fine if a rental unit is not inspected within thirty days. So, that number five hundred is something that council needs to decide if that's, in their opinion, an inappropriate fine.
Is there precedent?
Well, if, if it's not inspected, then they can't rent it, correct? So, I mean, then to go throw a five hundred dollar bill on top of that...
This is if the city discovers an unregistered occupied rental unit? So, they're renting it without it being registered?
And yet, I don't know.
So...
So, for reference, this is a forty mile radius from Meadville?
I was trying to...
Oh, right.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
Is Mercer in there?
Yes. I mean, prime of two regions.
Thank you, Katie.
Sorry, what were we?
The five hundred dollars.
So, this is a five hundred dollar fine per month. I believe there is a one, a rental inspection program that's calling for a thousand dollars. The, the committee selected to scale that back to five hundred dollars per month. Again, it's up to council to set what those fines would be.
You're saying another program was issuing a thousand dollar per month fines elsewhere?
So, as somebody who is in attendance in subcommittee meetings and kind of did a little research on this, all the fines as enumerated in your memo are based on the Erie program. So, in other words, all the fines in your memo are identical to what Erie does when it comes to enforcement.
Oh, I see. Erie, I...
So, that's the precedent that that section is based on.
For me, it seems pretty steep. I don't know.
Marion, answer, answer this for me real quick. If, you know, once we work through these, what is going to happen?
So, a, a formal ordinance would need to be drafted. It's once you follow the aspects of it, then that would go through a discussion with council and then first and second rating. Once all the particulars are nailed down in, in this.
Yeah, I guess, I'm just thinking, like, this memo came to us, right, in our council packet? So, we have had time to sit and think about it and like, I mean, I'm, I'm glad that we're going through it, but like, right, I think if there were issues that some of us were seeing, right? Like Jim's already brought up a few of those. If there were issues, we were, I guess I'm just, um...
Well, and I've worked on the subcommittee, so this, this...
Right, you guys saw this, basically producing consensus.
So, again, it's not the subcommittee's role to set what these fines are. These are just suggestions. So, for, it's probably appropriate for council to have a discussion about the particulars of, of these things to make sure that it's a consensus of, of council.
Right. I might make a suggestion. We have a study session coming up. And while we're doing it, if we change it to six P M. to accommodate members of the public who often attend, this could be the sole area and we would not be suffering from low blood sugar later.
Yeah, so I can't do six P M. meetings because like I've scheduled my work around the meeting schedule we already have. I also don't want to drag this out for very long, I think probably for obvious reasons. And so, I think if we can have this conversation tonight, I'd prefer that. We already know where you're voting, Jim. You already outed yourself.
I, again, was part of the subcommittee, you know, and these suggestions are, are things that I, I agree with. So, that's, that's kind of where I, I am, right? I'm just going to put that out there. These, these numbers and the, like, the radius and, and things like that, those are all things that I agree with. So, that's where I'm at consensus wise.
I guess for myself, I would be the person that's came in the back. Can we just, can we just like not, not labor to, but I would personally like to hear your concerns, you know, like the things that you feel.
Sure.
That, yeah, I guess, I don't want to drag you guys out, out here.
Well, I mean, this is like what we're here to do, right? So, I don't think we should, we have to wrap up. I mean, you know, we only got started at basically seven o'clock, so I think that, you know, this is a big thing, right? And we should get it to the time that it's due, but also not really...
Well, can we just quick talk about the five hundred? I mean, does that feel like right for me to go without a kick? We just have a short discussion?
Yeah.
Because, yeah.
It does, it does feel steep. It does feel steep. Erie is maybe a different market. I think the purpose is to get the properties registered. Right, I'd be fine to drop it to three. I, I don't know, I'm trying to think of like what is right here, but also still moves folks into...
Do you have thoughts, Larry? Would we just share on that? We could just, we could do this, thoughts, and go to Jim's, while?
Go ahead, go to Jim's. Five hundred? I think you will end up having more properties taken off the market and it will increase chances that there are going to be people thrown out on the street homeless, so...
So, they only get the five hundred dollars because they don't register the property?
Right. Someone's living in a house that's not registered and they use charge of five hundred and people say, hey, we can't, we can't afford this. We can't afford the five hundred, move, and we'll fix the house up on our own time.
So, are you suggesting that, what is your suggestion?
I'm suggesting, I'm suggesting that five hundred is pricey. Again, I'd have a difficult time supporting the ordinance, but at five hundred dollars, I, I think that's just too much. We, we talk about the average wage in Meadville, which is around fifteen thousand dollars a year. That's three percent, well, more than three percent of the average wage, so...
Well, again, that's, it doesn't get charged to the tenant, you know?
Ultimately, it would be charged.
I mean, so, and that's a choice, let's be fair.
So, let's, yeah, let's, then, then down it to three hundred. Is that, is that what I'm saying?
Why don't you, I mean, if there's gonna, if there's a recurrence, why don't you start lowering? If there's a recurrence, build up. I mean, you know, you want to work, like, so, you want to work with the people. So, you know, start them at a hundred fifty, maybe a hundred seventy-five or something. If, and so recurrence, then maybe you, you, you add, add on to it. Or if they, they don't do anything in a period of time, you add on that way. Not just a blanket five hundred or X amount. Try and work with them as much as you can. We don't know the circumstances. You know, like, they, they, people could be in an apartment that's been unregistered and it's going to take some time because repairs are needed, need to be, where, you know, landlord could want to fix it up. But now that it's under registration, they, they're going to have to take, it's going to take time. So, we want to work with them, you know, with their finances, helping them and helping the renters. Because as you're saying, it's going to be passed on. So, we want to do the most we can to reduce costs.
Right, and then, but remember that it's, is, once it's discovered, there's still thirty days also. So, it's not like immediate that day.
Right, and if you don't see it...
Yeah, yeah.
Brenna and Gary, is this, is this like a precedence for all inspection programs? Or just, or just Erie?
There's a penalty for, there are penalties for non-compliance. Now, as far as the amounts and the timeliness of it, it varies.
That varies. Do you have any idea of a range?
I, I don't know.
So, I'm listening. The language in the Erie ordinance is a, a fine and/or jail time. I've removed the jail time from this. Because that, that didn't seem appropriate, these words here. So, it, it does go to those types of scenarios. I know there's a thousand dollars a day fine in some instances as well. So, it varies dramatically.
Do they ever do, like, the first month is something and then it escalates? Or is it just kind of like, no?
I don't know why we couldn't do that. Start it lower if it's habitual offenders. I mean, we, we typically see that the judge, for, for example, for property maintenance violations, it's up to a thousand dollars a day. The judge sets the fine. We do not set the fine in those cases, but he'll say, it's because of the first time. They may come before him and say, okay, your fee, your fine's a hundred dollars. And if, if you keep going, he'll jack that up as he feels appropriate to, with eventual offenders.
But this wouldn't be, this wouldn't be the judge setting that, that fine?
I think it would.
Way citation to, if anyone knows.
So, this is a, this is the cap? This is like the most that he can?
You can set him, you can set a scale.
Okay, there we go. That's it, yeah.
So, you can set a, a hundred dollars not to exceed amount? That's up, yeah.
Two to five?
Yeah. Not going to try to ask.
I guess, I don't know. I'm going to throw out the low ball. I'm going to stay to start like a, not very...
We do want people to register the property.
Yeah, we do. Yeah, I just know that like my landlord had a thing happen with, at the building that I'm in. It's not you, Marlin, it's the other building. And, yeah, I was just, I was just thinking, I mean, Gary, let me know, is this to wait at like fifty dollars? And then, and then...
That's less, that's like less preparation, like at that point, you're not...
The minimum for property maintenance violations is a hundred?
I'd say a hundred and fifty. Start at a hundred and fifty and if it's...
Hundred and fifty not to exceed five hundred or not to exceed that hundred? I, I don't know if we put it here, right? But, you know, we've talked, this council, we've talked about the whole home repairs act, fund money. Some of that is coming available for, for landlords in... Some of that is coming available for landlords in loan interest loans, right? And I wonder if we can kind of couple that, right, violations with support and assistance to access some of those funds that might be needed to.
I'd rather see landlords just get the money, if they're gonna get money, I'd rather see them just get the money to use it for their property to, you know.
Well, that's what they would, that's what they would do.
What you're saying about the fine or.
No, no, no. I'm saying like before you get a fine, right? Like if you're, if you've got an application in progress for this, right, for this funding source to put money into the properties, you don't get a fine, right? You've got an application in.
I would say since eighty's that's like the minimum, it seems like the place to start it addressed is like possible in understanding.
Sorry, Gretchen.
If it's 100 is the minimum for a property.
That's for, that's the minimum for like if a property maintenance violation goes to citation. The fine can be no less than 100.
I feel like that's a really a good starting point. And then if you guys can discuss from there.
No less than 100, no more than 5. Yeah. I'm for that.
So under licensing, bullet point number four. If a license is revoked and the unit is vacant, it shall remain vacant until the license is reinstated. A license can be reinstated if a subsequent inspection document that documents that the reason for its revocation is fixed and if all applicable inspection, reinspection fees are paid. Just a little technicality on this. Would a revoked license leading to a vacant unit require a whole new registration fee of the 76 dollars or the reinspection fee of 55?
Reinspection. Because it's the same, they're judging on the same, right?
Yeah. All right, under enforcement. If a property fails inspection, the city code official will initiate enforcement measures, including a timeline for compliance and possible revocation of rental license. Council will need to establish what that timeline is unless Gary has any suggestions. Nope.
Is that not the same as the 30 days? The 30 days, the.
Wouldn't it, I'd kind of take into consideration what the reason for falling, failing inspection. It could be a major project or it could be something minor. So I think you would want to, the ruling would have to be based on what it is. If it's a big problem, then of course it's going to take time and money to repair. If it's something that's simple neglect, then I think we have to look at it that way as well.
This, I think the ordinance talks about 30 days is typical, but no more than 120 days. I believe that's in the memo. Honestly, I don't know something that's so minor that it would take 120 days. But if it's, you know, if it's a major thing, you would think it would take longer. But if it's a major thing like the furnace doesn't work, we don't want to give them a long time. Even though that's a major thing, it's a short timeframe. So I think it can go both ways.
Right.
So I think to your point, you know, maybe you leave a little bit of leeway in there. I think the 30 to 120 seems reasonable to me. As long as it's safe to occupy, there's no reason to.
And as long as they're working toward repairing it.
And it's, yeah, as long as it's safe and they're working toward it, that's what we typically do with property maintenance violations. If someone's working on it, we want to work. Absolutely.
Is that what you used there?
So we'll just make sure that under enforcement, we articulate 30 to 120.
And I guess that's where things like, if there are rights going after funding to fix the properties in the house, that's where that would come in.
So this language came from Erie's. So it's under penalties. Second bullet point, failure to register or seek, or to seek residential rental license for a newly constructed or newly created residential unit. Oh, I took that.
No, I missed it.
Nevermind. Disregard.
Disregard, okay, got it, got it. Well, do, sorry. Now you're bringing my attention to the fact that that bullet point. Should it, should it match?
100?
Well, that's what we, that's what we're saying. Well, that was. So we're saying failure to register or seek a residential rental license for something new would beat up no less than 100.
So they have 30 days to, before a fine kicks in when it's a new construction or a new, you're newly inspecting a unit. The 120 days is upon the reinspection, correct? If there's something found wrong?
It would need to be rectified with 120 days if there's a violation.
So this is, this is the failure to register or failure to seek a residential rental license?
So at this point, it hasn't failed.
Correct. How will we let people know, right, like what the registration process is?
In letters of tax bills. We're working on putting together a database currently, Peter is, to identify all the ones we think that are rentals and we'll send out applications. And we'll say, you know, yours appears to be a rental, please contact us. Work with people. Again, I mean, there's going to be times where there's going to be units that we won't know about, we won't find maybe for the first inspection cycle because we just don't know about it necessarily. But we'll do our best to send it out to, you know, basically if the property, if the tax bill goes to somewhere other than that place, we'll send it out to everybody, all of that, and then we'll find it from there. It's the best I can do.
So the last one that I have is under penalties. The final bullet point. After conviction or violation of this article, if such person continues violating the same provisions, then such person shall be liable for further prosecution, conviction, and punishment without the issuance of a new notice of violation. So the question comes in as continues to violate the same provision. So does this mean the same provision at the same location or the same provision?
I mean, I would. I was wondering, yeah. Okay, that makes sense, sorry. I mean, that's where I stand with that. I would assume that that's per, you know, me.
Yeah, I think, yeah, each individual unit.
Gary, did you have anything else?
I'd like to go back to exemptions. And I don't think you should have exemptions for owner occupied units or family occupied units.
I do, so.
If you're going to, if you're renting, say, a second floor out, it might have one full electric. First floor might have 30 amps on and two. If it burns, the second floor is going to go up with it. So how have you improved the safety of a tenant? You're holding a property for business purposes. How have you, how have you improved the tenant's safety?
Are you saying that the person who owns the house is living in one of the units? He didn't change his electric?
He might not change his electric for whatever reason.
But he changed the tenant's electric?
The tenant, so the tenant's place passes applying colors. He has extension cords everywhere and it's a fire waiting to happen. But his unit's not inspected.
I think at that point, right, we're getting into the tricky territory of then inspecting all owner occupied units. I correct me if I'm wrong, which I think is not the intent of the program. Again, the intent is that we're inspecting units that are rented out. Right, landlords renting, residential units is a business. We're inspecting it like any other business. If you live there, right, it's not the same thing, right? You're not getting that. It's not the same thing, right?
The property is still being used for business. Maybe not that unit, but the property is still being used for a business because you're getting rental income. So you're gonna.
Sure, if you, but if you also like own a building and there's commercial on the first one, I guess that's already being inspected, so.
Do you know, Gary, are there, I'm just curious, like with owner occupied, like a duplex or something, is there, are there precedents to efforts like, oh yeah, some cities are saying, yeah, the owner lives there and because they live there, they should be inspected.
Oh, that it should be? I'm aware. I can only tell you specifically owner occupied one. In a duplex, if an owner lives in one, they're typically not inspected. They're not inspected, at least in a couple of spit places I've seen. I could go, I could see you go either way, honestly.
I have, I have Erie's pulled up right now. Erie for owner occupied, they are exempt, but they have to provide an under-arrived statement of residency. They only exempt family occupied if no net income is earned by the owner.
So therefore they're certifying that it's not a business.
I mean, I think the way it's laid out here is, makes sense, right? The owner has to provide a copy of photo ID. And family occupied units, that similarly have to provide under-arrived documents, photo ID or other legal means of proof. I'm comfortable with this as it's for done.
That's all that I have.
Well, we expect the draft ordinance to continue?
We will try.
Aggressive? Absolutely done. Yeah, before we move on, I just want to say that I am glad that we're moving through this. I appreciate that we work on this and appreciate the subcommittee for all the time. The seven months of public meetings that you've had to work through, to work through this program and, and staff.
Okay, discussion motion, establish trick or treat date and time for 2022.
So that time of year?
Yes.
So typically, trick or treat, the city has done it the Thursday before Halloween. So that would put it on October 27th. Friday, the 28th is a in-service day for the school district. Halloween falls on the Monday. Halloween parade's on the 29th, that's Saturday. This would be trick or treat.
The Thursday, yeah, it's always been that way since I remember, so that.
One year, we.
Oh, one year, oh, yeah, yes. It was Halloween. And Meadville, it's always been the last Thursday of the month and the parade has always been the last Saturday of the month. And that's so that I think kids can have the next day off, right? So trick or treat night is. I move that we have trick or treat on Thursday, October 27th, from 6 to 7:30. I said. Discussion? Roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Resolution authorizing signatures stormwater facilities easement agreement, City of Meadville and, what, Autumn Gare?
A resolution of the council, the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on stormwater facilities easement agreement between Autumn Gare and the City of Meadville for 7:39 Lieberman Avenue.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
This is our standard stormwater easement agreements. And this is since there is a pipe as well as a stormwater cohort that will need to be put onto the property. This is just giving permission for city officials to enter onto their property and do work on those items.
And this will be a recordable?
Correct.
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. Resolution authorizing signatures memorandum of, memorandum of understanding, City of Meadville and Meadville Medical Center.
A resolution of the council, the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on a memorandum of understanding between the City of Meadville and Meadville Medical Center for the purpose of continuing the provision of health care to indigent, uninsured, and underinsured residents of Meadville.
Can I have a?
Motion?
Second. Discussion?
This is a request by the Meadville Medical Center to have this approved by council. This is a memorandum of understanding that council had signed back in 2010. They like to do it with attorney brick each mayor. This is really just so the medical center can participate in the 340B program, which is a public health service program. Saying that they will honor health care for underinsured or non-known insured. There's no obligation on the city start to do anything aside from signing.
You could terminate it in 60 days' notice to each other, but the hospital needs us to qualify for certain monies that help them provide care for those who can't afford to pay.
And that's it, all their facilities? Anybody have any other questions? McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Roja?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
And it looks like council members take it. Gretchen?
I thought you said question.
Oh, I, I'm sorry.
You're mixing it up. I'm sorry. You know, it's a long night. Yeah, I think I. Thank you so much for everyone for coming and sticking through all of us.
Jim, sorry, I passed right up wrong.
I have nothing for my, thank you.
Is it normally?
Which way do I go?
All right, all right.
Yeah, appreciate folks sticking with it. Appreciate you all coming. You know, trick or treat is a real hot button issue, so I'd be here talking about it. I am also glad, though, that we're taking a step forward on ensuring safe and healthy housing in Meadville. I think it's important. And it's a promise that's been made by many members of this council to our community. And I'm glad that we can take some, take some steps forward, living up to that. Right, again, the things we heard tonight, that this is $38 per unit per year, that this program is intended for health and safety of residents, for ensuring that. And we're doing it because we don't have a list of bad landlords or bad properties to target. Right, this comes up, has come up in just about every plan and proposal and recommendation that the city's received for decades. And it's about time that we do something. The housing stock is only getting older. And by the time the program will take effect and inspections are happening, right, there will hopefully be, there will be resources at the state level. And I'm really hoping that we can prioritize getting that, getting that money to folks. Some conversations have already been happening, as I mentioned before, about ensuring that we can get whole home repairs act money that can both go to property owners themselves to fix up their own houses and to small landlords, to fix up houses and kind of join us in this effort, right, to ensure safety and habitability in Meadville.
Again, I thank you for coming. It's always good to hear everybody's point of view and, you know, that's how we work through things. I want to thank staff, not just for bearing with us for a couple of hours and looking at you, Jack. But, you know, just, just doing all of the good work that is going on here in Meadville. Again, there's lots of good things happening, coming up on the 10th. Trick or treat is coming. It is fall. I do want, you know, everybody to be safe as kids go back to school. And we have councilmen driving here, so I'm excited for the future. I am happy to be here and happy for everybody that lives here and works here and I get to talk to you daily, so. I'm tired, so. We'll adjourn this meeting at eight.
Go ahead.
To executive session.
To discuss personnel.
Yes, to discuss personnel. All right.
All right.
Bye.
Session?
Roll call.
Um, I, I, Myers?
Aye.
Rojo?
Aye.
Aye.